Okay, let's go ahead, folks, and we'll get started with the evening. If you would stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So I assume that most of you have at least a general idea of how we're going to do that. But in case you don't, you'll see the agenda has public hearing, public hearing, and then regular city council meeting. The first public hearing will be on the issue of whether or not the council wants to go above the revenue-neutral rate for the 2025 budget. The second public hearing is to adopt a 2025 budget. And the third is what it says, it's a regular city council meeting. So I'm gonna, if you'll just bear with me, I do want to say a few things before we get going. And, you know, if I sound like I'm preaching, I'm sorry. Council members are not your enemies. This is not a job where we're making a whole bunch of money. These are volunteer people in your community. These are your neighbors, these are the friends, these are the people you see at the grocery store who are trying to help the community. The budget process this year was, did not go exactly as I think we had hoped in terms of the process. I think you'll see in future years, this council will do it a little bit differently. But in all honesty, guys, we're, and gals, we are learning as we go here. We very much appreciate the professional leadership we have, but he's leading us, he's helping us learn as we go. When you're considering the budget that we're gonna present, I would ask that you use your common sense, that you trust what you can see and hear. There's a reason why hearsay information is not admissible in court. That's because what one party says, another party said, is you need to be there, you need to hear it, you need to have somebody who heard it firsthand. So I would ask you not to get your opinion from people with access to grind, but from what you see and hear. And for that reason, I ask you to watch the city council meetings. If you have any questions about what's going on, they're available to you on the KITC website. You go to the website, there's a big red button, you click it, you get YouTube. Or you can go to MCTV20 Live, where you can also get the Marion football game, and click on there and search for the city council meetings. You can see for yourself, judge for yourself. We will have, we do have tonight our city attorney, Brian Beena, here with us. And we also have CPA from the Lloyd Group. Lloyd Group, very, very well-respected statewide, regional auditing company. John Regir is there with Brian. We also have, of course, our city administrator, Mark McInerney. And they're going to be here to help us deal with your specific questions. Those who wish to speak about, and we're gonna go into the revenue-neutral hearing first. Who wish to speak about that, you're gonna have five minutes to do so. We would ask that you come up and use the table and the microphone so that those who do watch at home will be able to hear and see what you, and hear what you have to say. After that, we will have the budget hearing itself, the same rules will be in effect. I will shut up eventually, I promise. Last thing, and this is, this is something that actually John and I talked about. A budget is a guideline. The state requires the city to create funds within the budget. Within each fund are line items. For instance, the general fund for the city has line items such as administrative parks, city buildings, streets and alleys, and a whole lot more. Each of those line items has a dollar amount assigned to it. You add them all up, you get the total of the fund. The city has to keep its spending within the amount budgeted for the fund. You can go over a line item. We're not bound by a line item. For instance, we could spend more on parks than we budgeted, and maybe that difference then goes into streets and alleys, or vice versa. It's line items, the key is to not overspend the fund. With that, we will open the hearing on exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. Folks, when you, if you wish to speak on exceeding the revenue-neutral rate, you're also gonna, you got five minutes. Your comments need to be with regard to exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. Immediately following this, we'll have a second hearing. It will be on the budget itself. So if you don't like the fact that $1,000 was budgeted in it for this and $2,000 was budgeted for something else, that would be for the second hearing. This one is about whether we should exceed the revenue-neutral rate. And with regard to that, let me just give you a little more information. Our current 24, 2024 tax rate, the mill levy, is 74.783 mils. So right around 74 and 3/4 mils. What is proposed for the rate for the upcoming year, '25, is 70.8 mils. The revenue-neutral rate, and that's the rate that we would, the mils that would put you making or bringing in the same money as the year before, is 68.13. So to summarize that, the proposed levy is 4.3 and, 4 and 3/4 mils lower than this year's mill levy. It is 2.6 mils above the revenue-neutral rate. Keep in mind that the mils are applied to the assessed valuation of your house or your business or what's in the city. If the assessed valuation goes up, a mil generates more money than it did the previous year if the valuation was lower. The 2.6 mils that this proposed budget, that's what we would be above the revenue-neutral rate, 2.6 mils, will generate about $36,400 in 2025. I mean, don't take me down to the penny on that, but right around there. So what's that mean? Well, if your house is worth $100,000, the difference between the revenue-neutral rate and the proposed budget, that 2.6 mils, will be $29.90 on your taxes, so right around $30. That's the difference between the revenue-neutral mill levy and the one that we're looking at adopting. So that's just background. With that, we'll-
You might mention it's page 13 of the numbers that you're referencing. If you have the budget, it's page 13.
Thank you.
For finding those numbers, do you understand what he's referencing on that?
So with that, we will open the meeting for comment on the issue of whether the city should exceed the revenue-neutral rate. Anyone wish to speak on that? Darvin, just have a seat and state your name, please.
Darvin Markwin, Burn, Kansas. Been running since 1902. I'd like for the council to recognize me a friend as a governing body. I don't speak why.
You don't speak why?
To recognize me as a friend-
I heard that.
-of the governing body.
Yeah.
I don't know how you say that in court.
Well, what?
Anyways-
I'd call you Darvin, is what I'd call you, but-
Right, whatever. If we're gonna move this community forward, how are you gonna move the economic development forward when Hillsborough is 30 mils less than we are here? I do think it's possible to stay with the revenue-neutral rate with savings from the $136,000 that we don't have to pay on the swimming pool no more, the $100,000 bond and the $36,000 that went towards the maintenance of it. We don't have a ball field that we have to pay on no more. I do believe we need a street sweeper, but the one that we have, we never bought it brand-new. I don't think we need to go out and buy a $250,000, $300,000 street sweeper, a brand-new one, but I think we do need a good used one. I don't really know why we need another excavator. I think that would be a savings there that we could save.
Darvin?
Yeah.
Isn't that more about the budget itself?
No, 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 because I'm trying to keep it revenue-neutral rate, and I'll get too near. I think that we could invest our reserve funds with better interest rates. With the state, we'd get 5% to 6%. On the reserves that we have should be $2 million reserved. I would think that we should have that invested a lot better instead of getting $47,000 on interest.
We made over $100,000 in interest in '23, and we don't know yet what we've got in '24.
Well, it showed $47,000 on interest on line item.
Okay, well, I can't speak to that.
But I do think there's better ways to invest it. As far as the equipment reserve, maybe we need some of this equipment, that's fine. But I think that, you know, we should have a long-term investment plan, five to 10 years, to look at all this equipment and put a little bit of money each year in each one of those if we need a street sweeper, a police car, or whatever, instead of just coming up at the last year and putting some money in there and then going out and financing it. We put $10,000, $20,000 down on it, we go finance it, and we're paying 6%, 7% interest on some of that stuff. We got financed, 6% anyways. And if that's in, if you would put that in there for a number of years to build that, you could also invest that money drawing some more interest. And you could actually, in order to do this, to hold it revenue-neutral rate, you could make that cut within the reserve, across the board there in the reserve that you have now. And then you could make any other cost savings throughout the year looking at some of the spending, because I do believe some of the spending that I see, I really wonder if it's really for public use. I don't have a problem with some of it being spent out here, but when it's only being spent on 20 people, to me, it should be 30% of the public, not just 20 people here and there, or 30 people, 40 people. I think it needs to be better invested when we do that for bigger functions or whatever, instead of just having a low turnout on some of this other spending that we hand out with businesses.
Yeah, 30%.
When I was, when I was in business for 20 years out there, this money wasn't being handed out. Kevin, did you have money handed out to you in your entire business?
Not that I recall.
Exactly. So that's about all I got to say for now on this. But I do believe you could, if you would look at some of those savings and stuff, we could hold it revenue-neutral rate. With Hillsborough, we need to be going backwards. How are we gonna develop this community when somebody comes out here and looks at something?
That's five minutes, yeah.
Okay, they say Hillsborough, you know, is 30 mils less, they're liable to do the Hillsborough.
Anyone else wish to speak with regard to the revenue-neutral rate? No one? Okay. In that case, we will call this meeting to a close with regard to the revenue-neutral rate discussion. The, at this point, council, the budget, we will go into discussion of the budget and whether or not we're gonna pass that budget. But in order to get to that point, I need to call for a vote on the resolution, which is 24-09. And this is the resolution. Whereas the revenue-neutral rate for the city of Marion was calculated at 68.13 mils by the Marion County Clerk. Whereas the budget proposed by the governing body of the city of Marion will require the levy of a property tax exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. Whereas the governing body held a hearing, which is today, on September 16, 2024, allowing all interested taxpayers to be heard and, heard and given an opportunity to give oral testimony. And whereas the governing body of the city of Marion, having heard testimony, still finds it necessary to exceed the revenue-neutral rate, now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the city of Marion. The city shall levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue-neutral rate of... And I lost my number.
68.134.
Okay, thank you. Is that, no? Yeah, 68.1234, 134.
He shook his head, yes.
Now, this is the resolution before us, council. If, we'll need a, either a motion not to do it, or a motion to do it. If we vote to do it, then we'll move into discussion of the budget at the rate that is proposed and when we talked about last week, that is 2.6 mils above the revenue-neutral rate. If you vote it down, we'll go into a discussion of the budget at the revenue-neutral rate level, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we pass resolution, resolution number 24-09 to increase, to exceed the revenue-neutral rate.
Is there a second?
Hold on a minute, so there's no reason to have a budget here if you're gonna, we don't have a budget.
Darvin, Darvin, we're not gonna do this, man, come on.
That's fine, but I don't understand why you're voting on that until you have a hearing, then you can both exceed it.
Darvin, Darvin, don't do that, man. Let's, let's, this stuff of we're all yelling at each other from out in the eye.
No, I'm just saying-
Well, but, man, you've got to let us conduct business. And if you wanna talk, come over here so the people at home can hear you. But you don't just talk when you want to.
I understand that, Mike.
Okay.
But what I don't understand, there's no reason to have a budget here if you go ahead and vote to exceed it.
Well, there is, because the budget hearing is where you'll have an opportunity to talk about how the money within the, the budget is allocated. Okay? I'm not trying to be a-
No, I understand that, but I didn't feel resolved, done that way.
Okay. Well, let me ask. I've got two professionals here, actually three, Brian, sorry.
I'll take care of it.
Am I, am I misreading the, the procedure here and as to how we ought to be doing this?
So as per what has happened over the last few years with the revenue-neutral rate, you do, and what we've been recommended through the state of Kansas, through the statutes, is you do hold the revenue-neutral rate, you pass to exceed the revenue-neutral rate, and then you do set that final amount. So what you're doing by passing this resolution is you are exceeding that 68.134 revenue-neutral rate. You can still adjust that final rate as we get through the budget hearing, and that's what we will do next. And, but that is the process, that is, if you opened up the state forms, that's the process that they would put out there. There's a process that out on the state website that we adhere to as per their understanding of the statutes, so. And as a reminder, this is a roll-call vote that you will have to hold as should you get a second and move forward. There might have been one I may have, may have missed.
The motion was by Councilmember Boxa to exceed the revenue-neutral rate and adopt the resolution. And I think I was getting a second.
Yeah, I was seconding it.
Okay, seconded by Collet. All right. The, I'm going to, we'll just start on my left. Councilmember Boxa, obviously all in favor of the motion, yes. All in favor, no. Councilmember Boxa?
Yes.
Councilmember Burkholder?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Oh, I just did exactly the opposite. That's how it's printed on here. Councilmember Collet?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So it's a 5-0 vote, the vote being to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. Now let's open the, we will hereby close the hearing. Do I have a motion to adjourn the revenue-neutral rate hearing?
I move adjourn the revenue-neutral rate hearing.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post name? Ayes have it, 5-0. So we will adjourn the revenue-neutral rate hearing, and we'll go into the public hearing for the budget. And this, we will do the same thing, folks. This is about the budget that's got the 2.6 mils. We can still, come, we can still adjust that.
Yes.
I made you happy, Ruth. Okay. So if you wish to speak to that, come up, same thing, you have five minutes. Just state your name at the microphone.
I need a three-gear for Marion.
Ma'am? Yeah, go ahead over there, because that microphone's not that great. So say your name again, please.
Okay. I need a three-gear for Marion. I live down on Tanglewood. And I didn't bring numbers like some of you have. But anyway, I'm on social security, and my social security will go up maybe 2%. And I see where you increased certain people's paychecks by 25%. And I don't begrudge that to them, but I think there should be a way to adjust that. And my, well, I can tell you, my, my Medicare in pills are 240, or 444,000 a month, and I'm finally in the catastrophic. So you know that, what that does to my budget. And, and I think we need to consider the people that are on social security and, and their increases. And I know my, when I wrote my checks out for taxes, they have increased also. So I guess that's what I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Well said.
I'm Ruth Herble, and you have already cut my speech in half, which makes me very happy, because you did away with the recreation program and combined that with community enrichment. The only thing that we did-
Hold on, we'll give you the extra time. There's an angel calling you.
I'll start your five minutes now.
You want to just start over?
Yeah, I start over.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I would just like to share with the council and citizens of Marion a few facts about the recreation program. We transferred that to USD 408 in 2021. Therefore, we get taxes under the school. And if we would have added that to our budget, that would have made us double taxation. But you snuck around it and added it to community involvement, or enrichment, excuse me. But are you aware that Charter Ordinance 1921-6 established a transit guest tax which generates $25,000 a year? This is to be used only for promotion of tourism, conventions, commerce, and economical development. So the art and the park fees and the gas, guest tax would generate about $32,500 to promote festivals and tourism. Rest of this is kind of non-essential right now. Then my next problem was with the utility fund. The utility fund is transferring $420,000 to the general fund. The question is, why more now than they have ever transferred in the past? For years 2018, 2021, 2023, 2024, there was $200,000 transferred to the general fund. For years 2019 and 2020, there was $150,000 transferred to the, the general fund. These seven years were fact-checked, and I left out 2022. Nothing was transferred that year to the general fund. No, I lost my place, sorry. Okay. In the 21 years that I have tracked the city, I had, I don't remember more than $250,000 being transferred to the general fund. If the city transfers this amount now, eventually the utility fund could be depleted. And when they, and then they will raise your utility rate. Is the increase due to the fact that they no longer have the 3/4% sales tax in the general fund to spend? This sales, sales tax was not supposed to be spent, but chances are it was. Overspending needs to stop. With the increases in taxes, we are making Marion poor. How many homes are on the tax sale because of delinquent taxes? How many new businesses have we got in the last couple of years? The taxes in the industrial parks are so high that no one can afford to build, build there. In fact, we have a person here in Marion that's building a new building outside the city limits. One of the buildings in the industrial parks, three years ago, was taxed at $10,000. And I just kind of want to know why we are transferring $420,000 to the general fund. We will have less expense in 2025, $136,000 paid out of the general fund for what was the swimming pool. This expense ended in 2024. Thank you.
Ruth, what, if you don't mind?
No, I don't.
Go ahead and stay, because I'd like the, our professionals to give you an answer to that question.
Oh, that'd be great, thank you. I didn't really expect one, but I'd appreciate it.
Well, we're gonna try.
Okay.
And we may not agree when we get done, but, well, who wants to handle that? Mark?
I can start, go with John. First of all, on maybe the bound or the transfers and things. I think last you did your budget because you, they had recommendation what to take that industrial eco-devo sales tax out and put it into a separate fund, so we're doing-
That's correct. That's what Scott recommended.
Yeah, so that's what we're doing here. That is budget authorities in place in case you do need to budget it to, to backfill the general fund. There's also extra, we have things that are budgeted, transfer that are, you don't have to do them, it's just kind of a guide. I will say, just because I've been in other towns, every town has their own philosophy, and, you know, I'm just in and out a couple days a week. Some towns keep their property tax low by transferring utility funds in. There's a town in southeast Kansas, as I understand it, been told they have no property tax for the city. It's all the transfer utility, they have every utility known to man. So it's a different philosophy for each town. It's, I know towns that have the lower tax rate, they decided to do it by transferring the utilities. Some towns try not to transfer. Normally, there's kind of a percentage you like to do each year.
Okay, but my fact was that we have $136,000 less than what we had this year, because the school bond is paid off. So why do we have to transfer $220,000 extra then?
Well, that may work, we try to throw it, again, someone mentioned a street sweeper and some term road improvements, infrastructure at night meals. Again, at the end of the day, we can decide exactly what needs to be done, but that was the theory behind it.
Well, I just wanted to throw that out.
Okay, thank you.
You know.
Ruth, I want to give you an additional answer to that.
Thank you.
I, I don't know yet, and it could be, I don't, I mean, I don't know. I don't think this will happen, but it'd be great if it did. Maybe we could be sitting here a year from now and realize that we're better off than we thought we were, and we could drop the mill levy, not only to revenue-neutral or maybe something lower. I guess depends on what valuation does in the meantime. But I am, and I have beat this drum consistently with Mark. We have to hire some people. We need a full-time city administrator. Mark's doing a great job for us. I will be eternally grateful to him. He's a great guy, and he is respected across the state. But we need somebody who's here eight to five or whatever every day. We need to get a police chief hired, we need to get an economic development director hired. I am really worried that the cost of hiring those people is going to far exceed anything we've ever paid. Two reasons. One, if you check around the state, you will find that young people don't want to come to small towns. Eric must have a voodoo doll and poked it in the pit fin to get him to come here, because young people don't want to come to small towns. Secondly, the word is out that if you come here, you're gonna get beat up pretty bad. And I think we're gonna have to pay a premium to get people to come here. So that's my answer.
Okay. Do you think that we'll have to pay more for a city administrator than $100,000 like we did in 2022?
Yes, I do.
You do?
I do. I can tell you that Lyons, who I think is a comparable city, is advertising right now, they're offering $110?
$110.
And a $30,000 incentive.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your information.
Thank you, I appreciate the questions.
I just should say that since you added the rec program into community enrichment, that added 41,500 some to the budget.
Community enrichment, do you want to explain what that line item is, community enrichment?
Well, one thing we did, you know, in my short time here, I, I hear people talking about, you know, doing some things. doing some things, infrastructure, equipment, things like that. I think that, again, my industry have a nice little town here. We put in some matching funds. I think there's so many grant opportunities out there. For example, if you want to, you're gonna do a CDBG grant, you're gonna have to come up with minimum 25, most likely 50 to match it. I think those are some opportunities you could have.
So that was what that 60,000 was for at the bottom of that?
If you don't come up, you don't have to fend it.
Okay, thank you.
If, if there's an opportunity that I think you might want to carry.
Anyone else? This would be to speak about the, the budget that's before the council right now. I knew I could count on you, Darvin.
I didn't want to let you down, Mike. You know, we're talking $40,000 difference, you're saying now that we've got to pay an administrator. Because we already budgeted a year ago 100,000, if not a little bit more than 100,000. With only having two officers on for the last year and a half, two years, off and on, that police department budget of 400,000 some dollars, there should be a pretty good chunk of money left over in that with that much. How much money was left over in that as far as current, do we know?
Obviously, we can't tell you up to the minute, but do we, you got a ballpark on that?
Authority carryover.
But, well, the money that hasn't been spent from the police department salary portion of the budget.
Oh, it depends throughout the year, how many months they were gone. I think you were at two, two to three a lot this year. Pay, benefit, training, equipment, all that. I'd say $50,000 at officer, maybe, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, the only thing I'm saying is there's other avenues to look at. You know, I, I truly believe that we're going to just go backwards. We gotta halfway try to compete with Hillsborough over there. When there are 30 mills less than we are, I, I keep hearing you're looking at hiring an economic developer. Is that true?
Yes, absolutely.
He's not going to have a chance.
Might be a she.
Huh?
Might be a she.
Well, he or she, whatever, whatever. But I just, I just don't know how we're going to be able to compete when we keep raising it. And we have other avenues. You've got to remember last year, from the state fundings that we received on sales tax and all that, which that has nothing to do with the, the mill levies. But it was 765,797 dollars that we received from them. Through sales tax and special, the guest tax, and that was everything included in that. But I'm just saying, you know, maybe we could back off of maybe buying some things and maybe just go ahead and, and maybe put 10, 15,000 down towards some of the equipment that you want instead of going out this next year and just buying equipment. We've got by how many years with that street sweeper out there? If we can get by another year and put some money towards it. But this interest to just keep borrowing and borrowing, we need to be building that up and having a long forecast of looking at buying that stuff instead of putting it down and buying it the following year. And I really do believe we could make a lot better money by investing some of that fund money that's set aside with the state. But I just hope you guys can see that for economic development. And I'll also tell you, there's a, there's a legislation going through right now that, you know, you could say, well, we can bring a business in and tax exempt them on property tax. But with what legislation's going through up there, they went through this year, but it's still on the table for next year, they might hold you up on being able to tax exempt that property. So that's the only thing, I'm just hoping you guys can, we got a lot of other citizens that just can't keep pulling this. And I will tell you, a number of business people told me that their taxes are getting out of hand to try to compete.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else with regard to the budget? If, if there's no one else that wishes to speak, then at this point in time, I would move that we close the budget portion of the hearing. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Or, yeah, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. Folks, by folks, I'm referring to the council this time. This is when we, we need to determine what we're going to do with the budget. We've heard people talk with regard to revenue neutral. We've heard people talk with regard to the budget itself. We've got many options. We can pass it as is. We can amend it. I guess we could reject it and try to come back and do it another time, but we're getting a little tight on time to do that. So I think we're at a point where we either need to pass it as is or amend it and pass that amended version. So I am open to discussion.
One of the, I'd want just a question on, on something here. A few things I noticed on page 7A, under expenditures, the swimming pool line. I know we discussed this a little bit on the, where it's broken down on the other pages. I believe that for the 2025 year was zeroed out. Although it does show up on the general fund on page 7A. So it was...
I think that goes to you, John.
I think it was a, yes, I believe when I reprinted, it didn't pick up that page on 7A. But the copy that I, that we finished up this morning, it is back to zero.
Okay.
And just-
But that didn't affect the numbers?
Correct, no. At the end of, at the end of the day, we're going with the, you know, the authority for expenditures and that mill rate. But it was one of those, I think I printed the detail and then didn't print that summary page when we talked. I think that's from last Monday. So I apologize for that.
That's fine. Make sure we're clear on that one.
Are you looking at the copy, Tim, that was being now when you came down here?
Not the one I came down, or this was the one, is that corrected?
I played a new one there for you.
Okay, I didn't grab a new one when I came in. I didn't realize it was going to be different.
It should have been my one.
Okay. Probably the only number that should be different on it.
We've done some back and forth refining between, you know, Mark and myself and Janet as we went through this over the last week, just to dial everything in to make sure we're all on the same page, so.
Other comments or questions, counsel?
I had received a question from somebody in the community about unpaid taxes and how that figures into the budget, right, of, obviously, every year, there's a percentage of taxes that go unpaid and how that figures into the budget. And I think I've got the answer that, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, but essentially, there's a number that the county provides us that we use to account for that percentage of lost revenue. And so you, you essentially almost budget a little higher with the understanding you're not going to collect 100% of the taxes. Is that correct?
Correct. So there's a delinquency rate that you get on when, when we're preparing the, the information. It's statewide on all municipalities, and so you kind of give a little bit of cushion there knowing that, you know, based upon previous years' delinquency, you can't, we can't see the future of what's going to happen. So that, that does fluctuate year over year. So there's a little bit of additional piece. And you'll see it on each of the revenue lines of any levied fund. There is that delinquent tax. You can see how much came in. If we go just to the page seven, you have your ad valorem tax, which will be taxes that were levied and received in that current, in that current year of 2023. That next line down is that delinquent tax.
Gotcha.
So when we, as we prepare audits and as we go forward, that's where we, we note that as we confirm with the counties of, of how much, statewide, not just here in Marion, but that's how we can show that that, your delinquency rate at that point.
Thank you.
Yes.
I want to just, real quick, address a couple of things. I find that when, when you talk to Darvin, he says a lot of things that make sense. I don't always agree with every part of them, but he has some good thoughts and good ideas. I don't know that Hillsborough is our competition. I get it, they're 10 miles away. I get it that, you know, it comes to football time, nobody would want to beat more than Hillsborough. But they have some advantages that's going to make it a little difficult for us to compete. When you talk, the biggest being, of course, Tabor College sitting there. But if you are going to compete with them and you want to attract people to your town, then you have to have your town look as decent as their town. Come sometime here and just walk through this building. As you walk out today, walk out and look up the stairs, look at that carpet, look at the dirt. Look at, go in these bathrooms back here and look around. Compare that to what you see in the one in Hillsborough. Take a look at, I mean, they've just put in a brand-new splash pad to attract young families with young children into their community. When, all we did was have a meeting to talk about it, and we got lamb-blasted in this community. If we're going to compete, we have to compete on an equal footing. Don't know if we can do it with Hillsborough, but we certainly have to. We've got great school facilities. Look at them. They impress people when they come to town. We've got great medical facilities. We've got multiple doctors, physicians, or nurse practitioners. That's impressive when it comes to town. Where the ball's being dropped is by the city. I really, really hope, I really hope, and there's no reason for me to think otherwise, that next year at this time, we can say, hey, we've got this worked out and, and we can drop this mill levy some more. But until we get through a, a budget that we have set with the factual circumstances that we have, I won't know that. So that's, that's all I'm going to say. Council members, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Well, and also just because, I mean, we passed this budget and this is what we proposed, it, it doesn't say that we have to spend that. I mean, like, equipment and stuff like that, it's still going to be brought back in front of the council, you know, for approval. So if we get six months into next year and things aren't looking good, you know, then we don't have to spend all that money that's budgeted. You just have to get it approved so that you can if those needs come up.
Don't, don't do that.
Right.
I'll say it for you. I, you're right, but I think the public has been used to knowing if you, if they assess it, they're going to spend it.
Right.
And that's, I mean, I don't blame anybody for having that feeling. And I'm not going to promise we're not going to spend it. I would think it would be great if we didn't have it.
I'm not either, but I'm just saying that just because we passed that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to have to spend every penny that's in that.
You're right.
I mean, you know, all of us, we own houses and I have commercial property and stuff in town. I mean, we all pay taxes as well, and we don't like increased taxes. But like I said, you know, you want to keep your streets good. You want to keep, you have to have competent people to, you know, to fill the positions in the city and, and in this economy, I mean, it just, it, I mean, everybody knows it just takes a ton of money to cover all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, we're, like, like Mike said at the start, you know, we're just trying to do the best job that we can to keep our community moving forward and make sure that we have money in place if we have some opportunities and to hire some competent people to fill those positions that we're going to need, so. I mean, I know you might not agree, but that's, that's my opinion. Thank you.
I think, just given that every year, regardless of what inflation is, every, I mean, there's always inflation, whether it's high or low, there's always inflation. So we're always dealing with things cost more to operate and run and acquire than they did a year ago. The budget that we have laying in front of us, I think minimizes that and, and really, right? I, I think it's a happy medium between making sure that we have enough budget authority to continue to operate the city and make things better while also minimizing our impact, right? Because we did take that into consideration last week, which is why we have this budget laying here at 70.8 mills versus sticking with the same mill rate that we had last year, right? That was a big concern of all of us that we all voiced last week. In my opinion, the, the, the mill increase that we're looking at is, is minimal. I just want to make sure, so you said $30, and that would, that's over the course of the year, right?
Yeah.
So let's say a $200,000 house, double it, you're talking about $5 a month extra that that is. I don't want to pay that any more than anybody else does, but I think that's a happy medium to get us to be able to continue to operate the city, improve things, and also minimize the impact on taxpayers.
Anything of anyone else?
I, I agree with that, and I think people, you know, we don't want to pay more than we have to too. We all live here too. But I, I do think it's, is it perfect? No, but I think it is a happy medium. I saw a hand go up in the audience, that's why.
We're, you want to?
We're kind of past public comment, in my opinion, but.
Can we make them yet?
We've been, that's what that whole thing was all about.
I'm Robert Nichols. I've lived here 17 years. And on your point, it takes more money to do stuff. And I, I agree, it does. It does take more money to do stuff. Every time you buy anything, it costs more money. And you guys are in a bad situation on trying to get the money. I understand that. But you have to understand us as well, because you have to buy this, and you have to buy that, and you have to redo this, and you have to redo that. We do too. Our homes have to be fixed up. Our cars have to be fixed up. We have to buy food. Now, I'm retired. I don't get overtime. What I get is what I get. And every time you raise the taxes, I get less, pure and simple. The government's not going to help me. Pure and simple. I agree with you, but you have to understand us as well. That's the only thing I'm trying to get across.
And I think the point that, if I can jump in here-
Yeah.
That we were all trying to make there is that we buy the exact same things that you buy. We buy milk at the grocery store. We have to repair the same cars that you have to repair. We have to buy all the same things that all of you have to buy on a daily basis. We are all affected by that too.
To the gentleman in the green shirt, if you didn't understand when was the opportunity to be heard, then come on, come on over. It's not going to kill us.
I apologize for missing the opportunity. My name is Lawrence Lambert. I moved here six years ago or so. And it's been my joy to have the property that, having been a farmer, rancher, military, and then 30 years in the ministry as a pastor, I prayed for you. I want to, the council, I want you to know that. I guess I can say that here. But I'm about ready to be taxed out of my property. This year's hit me hard in the escrow aspect of my mortgage. My name might have been on, in the paper. I think that's horrible. I guess it's public knowledge, but sometimes I think in the paper, are we trying to shame people? You know, surely there's another way, a letter to the people who are in arrears. Fortunately, I, my name wasn't in there. But the handwriting is on the wall. You talk about no young people to come. I understand that. But I came here not for the lake or the reservoir. I came here because of family. And I have given between 600, 700 pounds of produce to the food bank. I'm not proud of that. I don't even want to be noticed for that. But I do that on my ground that I have here in the city, because I enjoy growing things. But the taxes do hurt, not just lower income. I think of the impact on the $500,000 that people can't pay. That's going to get worse. And I know your job is hard, but like the gentleman said, you need to hear, to me, the handwriting is on the wall for me and my, and my wife, that we may have to sell and move. I love Marion. And, but it's tough. And, but it's tough. And I think more of individuals that are having a hard time. And you don't have an easy job, and I pray for you. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Can I make one more comment?
I think we're at this point, do it out the window. Rock and roll.
One other thing to keep in mind here is that, while the city itself is the one that's continually lambasted for taxes and this and that, we represent roughly one-third, not even one-third, I think, of taxing entities, right? So if you are upset at tax increases, you're not just looking at the five of us, right? There's also the school board, and there's also the county commissioners. So if you're, if we're really upset about these things, I would encourage all of you to go to those meetings as well and voice your concerns to them. Now, I understand that we're the ones that continually get raked over the coals for different things, but I think it's important to keep that fact in mind as well.
Anything else from anyone? Anything else from anyone?
I have something to say.
Over here, whoop, whoop. People at home that watch these, or wherever they are, need to be able to hear you.
This is only one sentence, basically.
Okay, Arlene.
Okay. Sitting here listening, and I, I do not live in the city, but I grew up around here. My name is Arlene Sticker, in case you don't know who I am. Zach Collett made a little comment over there about buying, he buys milk and all that kind of stuff. That's true, but you're not on a fixed income. Many seniors are, so that makes a difference. And that's all I have to say. I believe in being truthful.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that the folks' comments are well taken. It's a balancing act. I don't, I, I don't want to, I, I think we need to make a decision here, and I don't want it to appear that it's like, okay, you said your thing, and we didn't pay any attention. I think that that stuff went into consideration as we went forward. And as I said, I hope next year we come back here and we're in a different situation. But at this point, I, I think that we have a budget we can work with. I am hopeful that we will be able to make it work well for the city. And I'm going to make the motion that we pass the budget as presented, which is 2.6 mils above revenue neutral.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion among the council members? No discussion? All in favor, say aye. Well, no, let's do a roll call on that as well. Councilman, Councilperson Smith.
Yes.
Councilperson Collett.
Aye.
I'm an aye. Councilperson Burkholder.
Aye.
Councilperson Boxer.
Yes.
Okay, so we have 5-0 in favor of the budget. With that, I would move that we adjourn the public hearing on the budget. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. We're going to move into the regular city council meeting. Everyone is welcome to stay. I don't know how much longer this will go, but it will go till it's done. If you're sure you're going to leave, we want to do it now, so it won't be in the middle of other things. But you're, you're certainly welcome to stay. We've already done the flag salute, so I'll call the regular city council meeting to order. With regard to the agenda for the regular city council meeting, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We will approve the agenda. With regard to the consent agenda, anyone have any questions with regard to, or comments with regard to minutes of the two meetings, or, well, or anything else? If there are none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed?
I approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and seconded, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, 5-0. If anyone would like to address the council about anything that's on the agenda tonight that isn't budget-related, this is the opportunity to do that. Okay, no public comment at this time. Mr. Bina, that takes us to you with regard to the release and settlement agreement. Brian, I think what we ought to do here tonight is discuss that, and then we'll have it on the agenda at the next meeting for action.
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
So as I believe you're all aware, I've been working with John Sill. He's now an attorney at McDonnell Tinker relating to the property of 1,004 plot in the industrial park. This is the property that was purchased from the city back, well, the contract was signed at the end of 2021 by Brett Unruh and Ashley Unruh. There have been a lot of issues from James Code Enforcement relating to that property, issues that the contract was not completed, as far as the Unruh's failing to build a structure that they had indicated they were going to build, which was an essential component of the contract when the city sold it to the Unruh's. My discussions with Mr. Sill have gone back and forth as to possible resolutions to that issue. And I have a release and settlement agreements that I want to submit to the council for approval that is effectively going to return that property to the city, and the city would return the purchase price to the Unruh's. This will be effective if the city wishes to adopt it upon execution by the city. The Unruh's have already executed this document. Effectively, what we're doing is just taking the property back so that the, the city can move forward with it for hopefully new and productive uses.
Questions of the city attorney? So, Brian, you've presented that to us. Then we'll put it on the agenda for action next meeting. That'll give the public an opportunity to comment if they wish to do so, and we'll go from there.
Certainly. I will get this scanned in, send it to Mark, so that he can send it to you all. And certainly, if there's any questions, let me know, and I can come back.
I think they still do have some property out there on that lot.
Oh, they addressed that.
There's a pickup out there, because I was just by it today and some other stuff.
Absolutely. So the situation with that is obviously they still own the property.
Yeah, sure.
Okay? Once the exchange happens, we will be presented with a warranty deed for the property. They will have time to remove any items that they have. And if they fail to do so, we'll take action at that point.
Gotcha.
We can basically declare it to be abandoned property. You give them a notice, and then you take it and do what you want with it to some extent.
Yeah, and it's going to depend what the property is as well. You know, if it's a, if it's a vehicle that has some solid value, and after the abandonment period, we can contact somebody to come and get that. If it's junk, we'll abate that and then send it, send a bill to them.
Gotcha.
If it's really bad junk, we'll put it in your yard.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome. Thank you, Brian. Mark, I don't, oh, Darren is here. Darren, do you want to speak to the crack and seal at the runway?
I believe you were given a document that's the bid to have. So today we opened the bid, and this is a KDOT Aviation grant that we received this last year. The grant we received is, the numbers I'll get down to here about midway down and what I propose to make this thing work for y'all. But we received one bid today from Circle C Paving. We had five bidders look at this, and only one chose to bid it. So, just to give you an idea, everybody is so packed with projects that nobody thought this minor of a project really was worth their time. That is what it comes down to.
Wow.
Yeah. So, the one bid we received, or, I'd say the base bid, the way the project was set up, the base bid was to crack repair and crack seal the main runway only. And then the adult one was to crack repair and crack seal the taxiway and the apron. We broke it out like that. The one bid we received was for $195,778. The grant we received, when we turned in the grant application, we applied for $136,250. 90% of that, that was the project size we had. And that's the number you see about halfway down on your sheet. When we applied for the grant, we only identified 44, 4500 lineal feet of these cracks to repair. And when the crack repair we're looking at, we have cracks out there that range from hairline, which we would seal, not repair, all the way up to about six inches wide. Last fall, I don't remember, nobody up there at Airport Board, I don't remember the exact date, but there, sometime in the last year, there was one aircraft that was a tail dragger aircraft with the rear tail wheel down, and did lose that rear tail wheel in one of the cracks. It was a little dog. So these are cracks we need to get repaired.
Is that someone local, or was that someone from?
I don't remember. We'll get Mark to see if he remembers being at that airport board meeting. I don't think it was local. I don't think. But I, I'm not 100% sure on that one. So we identified the cracks that were, say, two inches in larger, and got to that 4300 number. When we did this design and bid it out, I actually went down to more of the one-inch-sized cracks for the potential repair project. And that's where it came up with an extra couple thousand feet of one-to-two-inch-sized cracks. I was hoping for a much better bid price, and thought, hey, we could go ahead and get those repaired for that. In essence, what I'm recommending to get to, to where we can utilize the funds you have, but not go over the funds that we have available, both KDOTs and your 10% match, would be to actually drop back and go back to the original numbers that we had programmed with the grant, and say 40, and that's the bottom numbers, and you see that highlighted in yellow. If we do 4,350 lineal feet of crack repair, but don't do any sealing, which the city can actually do the sealing on their own, when we do street sealing, then that only puts us $285 over your existing budget. So my recommendation is to award it at the full $195,778. And we'll talk to this contractor, and they are fine with reducing it to whatever we need to. So then, I would say, as soon as we award it that bigger number, immediately, we can do a change order tonight to reduce it to the bottom number, the 126, 535, 50. And that puts us right in the ballgame of getting the worst cracks repaired. And then in the meantime, what we'll do also, because we now have a bid here, we will actually go back to KDOT Aviation, which the KDOT Aviation director is going to be here next week, I believe.
That's your goal.
For a meeting on some other airport issues.
Mark's already told me I'm going.
Okay, good. But when, when Ray is here, we'll address this with him also. And I'm sure he's going to tell us to submit a supplemental request. And we'll request some portion and say, hey, anything we can get between the 126 and the 195 that KDOT Aviation might have available, we can utilize. And you guys can still be, and then at a 10% cost of whatever additional we can get. So maybe we can do all 6,600 feet, or maybe it's the 4,300 of the worst ones. So I don't want to lose this money, and I don't want to take you over your budget. So that's, that's why we're trying to find that happy medium in here. You'll also see on there, there's a line item for construction engineering. That's a maximum not to exceed our costs. And if I can keep our hours down, then that's, I can do more cracks than we will. So any, that solicited 10,000, if I can only expend, get mine down to $5,000 worth of outstanding contractor, I'll put 5,000 back into cracks, so crack repair. So we, well, that one we'll adjust. And we'll come back at the end, like we do on most of our other projects. And we'll do a final reconciliation. But my whole goal, if you award this, is to keep it so that we don't go over your budgeted amount right now.
Mark, before I open it up to the council, anything you want to, guidance you want to give, or questions you have for Darren, or anything you want to say to us?
No, I think he hit it all.
Okay, all right. Then council, questions for Darren?
What would be the timeline?
That's, we've told them to start as soon as they can.
What's after that?
It kind of depends right now on the weather. That, that's really going to be the ultimate thing. Right now, they said, hey, we'd love to start in probably that late October, early November. And it all just depends, have we already seen frost and freeze by then? Or, you know, have the asphalt plants shut down? Or are they still operational, or just operational on days when it gets above 65, you know? So the, the real answer to that question lies in, hmm, what kind of weather we see over the next 90 days.
But then that could extend it into the spring.
Yes, it very well could.
If it does, is not favorable.
If, if we had some, a stretch of non-favorable weather, either too much moisture, because we can't be putting new asphalt in when there's moisture out there too. So either cold or moisture, we back off timing once. Which doesn't help our pilots out with how bad things are out there. But at the same time, I don't want to try to do something in, when it's not the most conducive weather, so it's going to shorten the life of what we do.
Yep.
How long does it fix the, fix the cracks for? I mean, in the summer, are they going to expand more?
Well, you're asking some good, technical, philosophical questions.
Sorry.
Can I take the next hour to explain this? The best answer to that is asphalt never should have been used in the states of Oklahoma, Kansas, or Nebraska. Reason being, you look south of there, Texas. They don't have the temperatures to get cold at night, or seasonally in the freezing-type temperatures. You look at the Dakotas, they never get hot enough long enough, or the swings that we do in these middle states.
Right.
When asphalt sees that swing during the year so many times, it, it starts shrinking and getting brittle.
Yeah.
And, and it never gets hot enough long enough for it to become fully pliable again to where it gets kneaded like bread. Therefore, we get thermal cracks. The best example I can give is if you drive down a highway, at one of our asphalt highways, any of these have been recently redone, and especially if it's the ones where you see an asphalt paved shoulder. Out in the driving lanes, you'll see a crack, or what we call thermal cracks, about every 50 or 60 feet on average. But you look at that shoulder where nobody drives routinely, or shouldn't be driving routinely, and they're about every 10 feet. And that's because you get that differential of driving. Out here on the highway, semis, regular cars, everything else, need that asphalt to keep it pliable. You don't out there. Runways are absolutely the worst, because when we do have full airport traffic, an aircraft only weighs nine to 10,000 pounds on average. About, not a whole lot more than your normal car.
Right.
And also, on our airport, the middle third of a runway never sees any weight, because as an aircraft starts to take off, all the weight's transferred to the wings and the aerodynamics. So we see very, very, very little weight on runways, so it never gets the action in asphalt runways. So asphalt as a whole is, is not great unless it gets a lot of use to keep it pliable. And on airports, it's just not. But it's the much cheaper option for large projects also. Lifecycle cost, over 20, 30, 40 years, concrete is way, way, way cheaper. Initial cost, asphalt is. And that's why we ended up with a lot of what we have. So are we going to continue to see cracks? Yes, we can't stop it. It's just not a, it's not a building material that is ever going to not crack in Kansas.
Thank you.
Is the runway, would it be shut down for the entirety of the thing? So let's say they get, can we get it, I mean, are you?
We put in the documents that if they get started, they have to get a patch back. So we'd never let them tear out more than they can put back in that.
So they, they might not finish the project. They might get, let's say, halfway done, shut down for the winter, runway would open back up, shut it again, shut it down again in the spring.
When we talked to this specific contractor, we said, hey, you can, you can only get about a day ahead of yourself on the removal.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, for that very reason.
Yeah.
We, we did not want our one runway, paved runway down for an entire winter.
Right, okay.
I just have one more question. When you, when you said that the city could do the crack seal, would you still have the 2,000 lineal feet?
No, that crack seal, you can see down on my lower one, I took that to zero.
Yeah.
You mean, would the city have roughly 2,000 lineal feet to seal?
The city will have roughly whatever, we roughly have, although from hairline cracks all the way up to the six inch, we roughly have the 8,600 that you see up top, if you add those two numbers. So it, whatever we don't do, the city could go in and crack seal to keep them viable for another year or two.
Okay.
I assume you need a vote, is it to accept the bid and move forward on the project?
Yes, yes it is. I do like Darren's idea, see if we get supplemental money, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I love that idea.
Right, and so that, to make that better happen, that's my recommendation, be to award the Circle C paving in the amount of one ninety-five seven seventy-eight. As soon as that vote passes, then I would recommend us doing an immediate change order to reduce their contract to the one two, twenty-six five thirty-five fifty, and then have us go ahead and apply for a supplemental with KDOT Aviation. That would be my three motion recommendations for you.
Okay, I will make a motion to accept the bid with Circle C paving at one ninety-five seven seventy-eight. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any, well, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, fives zero. At this time, Darren, when you do these, I understand change order, is that done in the form of a motion as well?
Yes, I would, yeah, go ahead and make a motion to approve a change order with Circle C paving to reduce their contract to one twenty-six five thirty-five fifty.
Which I assume that they're gonna, they're not gonna be surprised by that.
No, we've already discussed it with them.
Okay. Then I will make a motion to do a change order for the bid we just accepted, reducing it to one twenty, one hundred twenty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, discussion? No discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, fives zero.
And then my third recommendation for a motion for you is to have us go ahead and apply for a supplemental with KDOT Aviation to see how much of that difference we could potentially get back.
When does that, is there a deadline?
So with a supplemental like that, it can be turned in anytime during the year. There is a specific grant deadline with KDOT Aviation, but that's for a new project. For applying for emergency funds or these increases, we can do that anytime during the year on an, on an existing project.
I'll make a motion then to apply for supplemental KDOT grant funding.
I'll second that. Discussion? No discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, fives zero.
The other reason I did that, for the community members, too, the reason I wanted to go through that process, officially doing the change order, is it shows that keeping to your original budget is very important to you, and that we needed to do that, and that way, if we have that in the minutes, when I turn in that supplemental, it shows why we're asking for the supplemental, and where that number's really kinda come from, and how we derived it, and what kinda drove it. So I'm also going to have Janet supply us with the minutes from all of the meetings tonight, the hearings and everything, because that can also be part of that, it's crucial to the community as well as the council to keep the budgets.
Oh, okay.
At the budgets, so I can use that as part of this justification, too.
Darren?
Sir?
I'm just thinking, I bet those people who left before your presentation are kicking themselves, because that was riveting.
Oh, I can't wait for Friday night.
Thank you, sir.
Tune into MCTV, and we'll see how Mike's roasted back.
Mark, thank you, Darren. Mark, would you wish to speak to the moderate income housing grant?
In January of twenty-one, the council approved a moderate income housing grant, which is, as I understand it, homeowner down payment, assistance to help with the cost of purchasing their home. I think it was twenty-five thousand dollars max per home. The state senate has offered to amend that from a hundred to sixty, so that would amount would go up to forty thousand, to reflect the cost of construction shit that's blown out the road. So we just need to, it never got taken care of, so we just need to make sure, in contact with them, we need to approve it, get a signature, we'll get it back to them.
Okay, you're gonna be bringing us something specific to approve, or do we, I guess I'm not following?
No, it's authorized, Merit has signed, yeah. We have it printed in to the grant.
Okay, all right, piggybacking off what we did originally.
Yeah. It just decreases the amount of date, it's a construction cost on out the road.
Somebody wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the addendum to the NIH grant.
Second?
I second that.
Motion and second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes, five zero. Janet, come get with me when we get done, and I'll take care of this. Ms. Yates?
Hi.
Hi.
I've got a five hundred dollar request, Marion Merchants and Marion Economic Development Incorporated, we'd like to recommend that we spend five hundred out of the bed tax money on warrior flags. We're partnering with USD four oh eight rec, and MAC, Marion Advancement Campaign, and planning on having these for Main Street, and gonna extend them further east than we have been, and that's our request for five hundred.
We're talking, I think probably everyone's seen them, but the flags that are around town, that big red flags that hang Marion Warriors on them. The city is going to, the brackets that we have downtown on Main Street, the American flags that are up there now, they're on a little short pole, and so this crew just has to stick that pole in the bracket and move on down. The idea here would be that these flags, what's being purchased in addition to the flags, is the poles, so that the city crews don't have to take, I don't know how many it is, but a lot of flags, off poles, putting oven on pole, whatever, that's a lot of man hours, or staff hours and time there. So this would, that group that partnered together to do it, and we are gonna put up some additional brackets east on Main, that's been, you know, there's some concern about whether the city ignores the eastern part of downtown, and so we're gonna try to extend those, maybe as far as the country club corner there.
I wanna thank Stephen for helping me with this. Stephen helped me with the purchase of the poles and the brackets, and frankly, it's his crew that does the work, so.
So he really should be sitting there.
That would be great.
And just for what it's worth, the school is going to be, I saw them doing it yesterday when I was coming back to town, they, they're gonna have those same flags along Eisenhower out there by the football stadium, I think it's gonna be really attractive as people come into town, and I don't know about the schools part, but our part, we can put, you know, they don't have to be just those flags, we'll put other things in there, I hope, and as the future goes.
I think it's Stuco that's doing that for the school, isn't it?
They were the ones that were selling them door to door, yeah. Yeah.
Fundraiser.
So you're asking us to approve the recommended, the ME Di recommended five hundred dollar payment. Was it ME Di, or was it Marion Merchant? Oh, ME Di.
I have to go to merchants first, and then I go to ME Di, and then come to you.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the expenditure?
I'll make that.
Nope, go ahead.
I'll make the motion, to approve five hundred dollars.
Tim, you want a second?
Yep, I'll second that.
Box of seconds, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, fives zero. Thank you, Margot.
Thank you.
So you wanna just stay there for a second?
Yeah, I might as well.
Is there anything else that you want to, word to counselor and department and staff report, anything else you want to say?
Yeah, Arton Parks this weekend, and we're looking forward to a bigger show than we've had last few years, and Mother Nature and I are going round and round, but hopefully it's gonna be okay. Don't want that rain in here, but y'all need to come down, there's a lot of different things to see. We've got campfire benches, duck calls, beef snack sticks, got a traveling candy store, polished agates, a lot of the usual stuff, but there's some different unusual things. The food is gonna be different, we've had requests for some different new things, we do not have as many local people doing food. I took a lot of time, not to step on local toes. So what I've got is, if I've got a local person, for example, doing funnel cakes on Saturday, but they're not gonna be there Sunday, I've got somebody from out of town coming in to do funnel cakes on Sunday. So we've got Smash Brothers burgers, we've got Salisbury's with their shaved eyes, Carlson Barbecue will be down there, Wagon Wheel lime eggs, Bill Nasty's barbecue, Dutch Addictions is coming from Oklahoma, chicken on stick, deep fried bacon, deep fried pickles, deep fried Oreos, that kind of thing. Anybody's on diet, just give it up for the day. Then we've got locals doing corn dogs, walking tacos, biscuits and gravy, salmon rolls, breakfast things, Gambino's Pizza is gonna be down there, I believe it's a school group doing it as a fundraiser, but I'm glad to have them back, it's been several years since they've been down there. Scoops and Sweets will be there, we've got Sweet Peaches Cobbler's coming in from Missouri. On Sunday only, we've got Filipino and Asian food, and then we've got more fried greases, fried Twinkies, fried Snickers, fried peanut butter and jelly, so.
I feel my arteries starting to slow to close.
Well, you know, if you didn't get enough at the state fair, come, come to Arton Park, so.
That sounds great.
Yeah, I hope to see everybody there. I, I had lobster rolls, it's just so wrong, but maybe next year, they, they just don't have the staff to do it, so.
I'm sure those lobster rolls would have been fresh, too.
Yeah, now I'm telling ya, that was so good.
I'm gonna move on from Margot. Stephen, anything from you? Zachariah?
Yeah, we've got a new officer starting, he'll be on the twenty-third, so next Monday. He's coming over from the county certified, been working as a captain in this community for five or six years now, so.
And who is that?
Kalen Miles.
Yeah.
He'll be joining, his last day at the county is Friday, he'll be here Monday.
Okay, Mark?
None tonight.
Janice? Janice? Okay. All right, council members, Tim?
Nope, I don't have anything else tonight.
Kevin?
Nope.
I don't have anything, right?
I drove up by the Cobble Street houses, actually, since we were talking about it, before the meeting, those are, those have come along really nicely. There's one that's basically completely framed up exterior, and the other one, they were, looked like they were starting to stand up walls today, so, two of them coming out of the ground.
That reminds me, Mark, I, there was, I don't know, a couple weeks ago, I went over and looked at the new duplexes that were going in, and the, I mean, it was pretty messy there, and I haven't looked since then, do you know?
They cleaned it up, so.
They cleaned it up?
Yeah, they were cleaning it up.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually drove past the duplexes the other day, and it looks really, it looks nice. I don't have anything.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, yeah, you have a public hearing.
Oh, I did. Well, I jumped right over that. Okay, public forum.
I think this arts and crafts festival's a great deal. I hope that we got all the tax numbers for everybody coming in, so we can get the...
Got all the information from the state to hand out, I send the state a list of everybody after the show, and everything I'm supposed to do.
And it would be nice if the city clerk would check to verify that those all paid their sales tax, she's got that authority. The other thing I'd like to say is, when I was looking through that budget, the only thing that really concerned me was at one point, when I looked at the spatial law enforcement for seized vehicles, I did not see the money in there for the truck that was sold in December, itemized on the spatial law enforcement budget, about five hundred and sixty bucks per way. It's not itemized on that. And I do know that KBI is real strict on keeping track of that and the spending, is that correct?
Every year, I submit a report to them saying...
Right, but I noticed it wasn't...
You didn't have any balance, what came in and out?
But it wasn't itemized in the, on the spatial law enforcement. The other thing I would like, and I talked about this last year, I believe, with the levee, appreciate all you guys who drive across that bridge west of town, and look at the trees still growing on that levee. The elm trees, they just keep mowing off. Actually, I thought last year, maybe they sprayed them, but they're still coming up. That is a very bad deal, when you got those roots growing inside that levee. We just bought like seven thousand dollars worth of chemicals, I don't know, I don't know, I saw that a couple months back, from Van Deese and Abbling, I don't know where all that chemical went. But I do know those trees need to be taken care of, instead of mowing them off. Other than that?
So, just so I understand, again, if you're mowing them off, the root system could still be growing, so you're, you're saying that we need to be spraying, right?
The Corbin engineers are very strict on that, because you let them roots grow down in there, and that, especially right where the water's coming from the cottonwood, from the west, coming in and making that turn right there, it's hitting right there at that bank, which it is, it has rip rap, but those trees all should be sprayed out of there, because otherwise, one of these days, we're gonna probably get hammered by the Corbin engineers that they inspected.
Okay, thank you.
But all my property's in the valley.
And I think the court is ready to come next month, or the month after, to inspect it?
So we have no representation in the valley.
Got anything you're happy about, Darvin?
Absolutely. We'll talk about it afterwards. I got some info coming out there in a minute. It says right there in the box.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring you some happy.
Good, before you do that, I do apologize for getting them out of turn.
I would think.
Yeah, as it turned out, it went fine, thank you.
My name is Margaret Wilson. We moved here in nineteen sixty-four to teach. We thought we'd teach here a couple of years, and move someplace bigger and better. There are bigger places, but nobody has anything better. I appreciate, I love paying taxes. I love paying taxes.
Do they mind?
I will. I love paying taxes, because I appreciate the good roads we have, I appreciate the good police protection I have. I'm living by myself now, and I depend on my neighbor, Kevin Bruce, but I appreciate the police protection. I've, I've never been afraid in Marion. I appreciate our utilities, we have consistent water. We moved here initially from a little town in western Kansas. They have no grocery store, they have just this little bitty hospital, they don't have a good facilities like we have here. I appreciate what you guys do to promote and protect us, so we have these wonderful things in Marion. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
That was nice, thank you, Margaret.
Now, anyone else? Now do I have a motion?
Nope, there's one, hold it.
Okay. Just keep jumping up right as I'm ready to shut her down.
It's all right.
No, you're good, you're good. Just state your name and...
My name is Robert Schmidt.
Thank you.
I live in Marion, have it my whole life. My concern is, and I know electric guys are busy, but if you go up and down and look up and down the streets, my fear is, if we ever have an ice storm, we're gonna be out of flights for weeks, not days. And I don't know, they used to have contractors come in and take care of that, but they haven't done that for years.
So you worry about limbs, is that what you're...
Trees, trees and limbs, over the wires and in them. But, because I, I was on, I did electric, oh, I've been working for thirty-eight years here, so I, when we wasn't doing something, we was cutting trees. And it's, if we have an ice storm, we are gonna be in trouble. I mean, what do you think?
There's a lot of brownies, there is.
You just look around, because, well, like I say, I was on electric for thirty-eight years, and I, I probably look up more than most people do.
Well, Robert, you're a little bit like me, we both have to look up quite a bit, don't we?
Yeah. True.
Stephen, I know this in exactly, well, yeah, kinda is your department, uh, we've had, uh, professional or whatever you wanna call it, uh, tree trimmers in, I know they've done some stuff on Roosevelt and whatever, do we normally do some of that ourselves as well? Okay, is, is that, you go ahead, yeah.
When those, when we've had those contractors in, do they focus on lines, or was it more streets for like clearance? I know when they talked about like the hospital and that MRI truck and stuff like that.
The ones we've had, that we had this year, we're not this bad, but for a while, could just clear in the street, like.
Gotcha.
And we got that problem, streets too, hanging over. I don't, I don't know how they get the, if fire trucks and some of them could get down some of these streets where the stuff, I know they grow continuously, it's a battle, but that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mark, let's, let's look into that and see what, you know, past procedures been, or what we need to do that's different or whatever.
That's what I was gonna ask, so do you guys work on that, like, when you have time, I mean, if, just trying to focus on the lines and stuff? Gotcha.
Not gonna say anything till I make sure that ladies move in here. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it. We will now have five minutes that if the paper or any other press wishes to ask anything, we'll be glad to take them up. Okay, looks like not, I think we will go home, thank you.
Do you need your copy back?
Yeah.
Getting her one, had on the notes on it, I don't know where I'd find it. No, no, I, I find it, I got the updates, I just didn't realize this.
Hey, Ruth?
Okay, fair enough.
Well, that's okay, somebody ought to.
I hear what you're saying, and I'm not really, I'm not, I'm feeling, because you could be right. I just feel like this part time, I don't want to be really conservative and aware of it.
Conservative and making sure that good, that all over financially.
I understand that, and, and you guys need to tighten up the management and control spending, because that's gotten completely out of the way the last two years. And so I was on council, and it wasn't great, it's been a council the last two years. I said, you're not gonna approve spending in the council the last two years, you put it in the book, it's strictly compared to the previous. We didn't stress that until I asked the question, and Phil said, you signed the budget, but the fact was, I didn't sign that budget.
Well, that kinda goes to, to some extent, and I don't know, I guess time will tell whether, but-
Didn't have much to say tonight, so, I brought up more.
Hasn't been that exactly the way I wanna do it. Next year, I wanna do more of a plot above, where we talk about how much money were you in it? Instead of saying, you know, which-
We let the, we let the attorney make the decision on that.
Yeah.
That's your minute tomorrow.
I will, if I don't provide it.
Okay.
Not anything much on the county, guys.
Be me off the tent before you break that.
Two boxes said, believe me, the day when I was just simply standing around listening to this conversation with Ruth Langley, she says, don't put it up like that. I didn't know how this was meant. So anyway, like, what?
You know, I've been on since last year, and what's up with budget, I don't know, I'm not sure, the same with this year. So, you were on previous, that's what you're saying, you were always department heads.
And we had the discussion there and said, well, hey, can't you wait, couldn't you?
And, and then when you like, I had that conversation, I think, you know, it seems like, obviously, we haven't had a city administrator. You know, I think if we could get somebody in that position, I'm afraid, we could get somebody in that as a chance. A little bit long-term, but then-
I think I've, I've been five minutes here.
I think that would be important, there, 'cause you know, like, I didn't do it any other way, 'cause last year was as simple as this, it's happened again, you know, this year-